Call our meeting to order. First item is to adopt our agenda. Is there a motion to adopt? Second, all in favor, vote aye. Opposed vote no. You have adopted the agenda. And that's the approval of the September 26 minutes. Any discussion in these minutes? All in favor, vote aye. Opposed, vote no. They are approved. I see no council members present, so we'll move on to the items on the agenda.
All right. The first item is for deferral items. Item number one is 2013Z-031PR-001. This is a request to rezone from R10 to IWD zoning for properties located at McGavick Pike Unnumbered. And the staff recommendation is to defer this item to the October 24 Planning Commission Meeting. Next item for deferral is Cottage Park SP, 2013SP-034-001, on page five of your agenda. This is item number four on the agenda. This is a request to rezone from RS 7.5 to SP zoning for property located at Surf Drive Unnumbered to permit up to 81 residential dwelling units. And the recommendation is to defer indefinitely.
You heard the reports of these two? Do I hear a motion to defer these? All in favor, vote aye. Opposed, vote no. They're deferred. Now, would you help us through the consent agenda?
Sure. Before I get to the consent agenda, as information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with a decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. As notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items, unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So as I read these items into the consent agenda, please raise your hand if you'd like it removed. The first item on the consent agenda is item number two, 2013S-154, the Bugle three lot subdivision. This is a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located at 200 Haverford Avenue. This is, staff recommends approval with conditions of this item. The next item on the consent agenda is item number six, on page five of your agenda, 2013Z-036PR. This is a request to rezone from IWD to MUG zoning for property located at Vantage Way Unnumbered. And staff recommendation is to approve. The next item is item number seven, 157-74P-001. This is the Ultimate Storage Inc., Planned Unit Development. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan and for final site plan approval for a commercial planned unit development overlay district located at 458 Bell Road, Zone CS and R10, to permit the addition of a 3,400 square foot self-storage building. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. And the last item on the consent agenda is number eight, 2013S-171A-001. This is the first revision of Eastland Oaks Reserve Parcel and Eastland Acres Parcel A. This is a request to amend a previously approved plat to remove a note restricting the future lot to single-family uses only on properties located at Dalebrook Court Unnumbered. Staff recommends approve with a condition.
Thank you. So the items remaining on consent are number two, six, seven, and eight. Number five will be off consent.
And number three.
And number three.
Yes.
Right. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda, as I read? All those in favor, vote aye. Opposed, vote no. We're moving on to the previously deferred items. A council member is here. Councilman Davis, do you wish to speak now or wait till later?
How are you guys doing? Thank you. I'll just speak briefly on the number five, Riverside Drive. What we're doing is just a comprehensive rezoning of Riverside Village, which is Riverside and McGavick. Most of you guys probably know the area. Very supportive of this, obviously. I'm actually bringing it to you guys. Been working on it for a while with planning staff. We did exempt one property owner who had an issue with his property rezoned, just out of respect and courtesy. And so we went forward and had a community meeting with all the remaining properties in Riverside Village. And everything's been going really well. And we had a great meeting, did kind of a walking tour of the whole area, discussed why we wanted to pull all these properties into MUL-A and MUN-A. And I think all the neighbors are fairly supportive. Also had an Inglewood Neighborhood Association meeting, just kind of caught the overall neighborhood up on what we were doing. So again, we've got planning staff helping me with this, holding my hand through the whole thing, very supportive, obviously. The neighborhood's very supportive. And I think it's going to be a really great thing to continue progress. So thank you, guys.
All right. I think we're ready for next time.
First item is item number three. This is the White Avenue cottages. This is the request for a rezoning from R6 to SP in the Woodland and Waverly area off of 8th Avenue.
Just one second. I should make clear, as the chairman does, the items left on our agenda are numbers three and five. All other items have been taken care of at this point. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a request to rezone three properties from R6 zoning to SP zoning to permit eight single-family homes. The property is located on the west side of White Avenue in the Woodland and Waverly neighborhood. These are the properties outlined in red. And here's a closer view. Staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. As you can see from this picture, currently there are three two-family homes on these properties. There's a duplex on each one of the lots. And here's a view from the street. Like I said, this property is zoned R6 and within the Woodland and Waverly Historic Preservation Overlay District. The land use policy, the Green Hills Midtown Plan's land use policy for this property is single-family detached in neighborhood general. And what is proposed is this SP plan with eight cottage developments. These will be single-family homes, detached, single-family homes, which is consistent with the policy. As you can see, on the right side, there is a small elevation of a concept of what could possibly be included in this. And that, this, I will point out, will still have to be reviewed by the Historical Commission at any point before they get a building permit. But this is included as part of the concept of this SP plan. This plan has been reviewed by the Metro Historical Commission. We have looked at the rhythm and spacing to make sure that the units along White Avenue are consistent with the rhythm and spacing of other homes along that street. Originally, this plan was submitted with four lots facing White Avenue, but during the review process, that was reduced to three so that they could match the surrounding character of the area. The SP limits these to two stories maximum height. The plan includes a low-impact design for stormwater. And like I said, the architectural elevations will be reviewed, the final architectural elevations will be reviewed by the Historical Commission prior to any building permits being issued. And those would have to meet all the preservation district requirements for that area. This plan does support infill development. There are several critical planning goals, as are outlined in the staff report. It does support infill development. It creates walkable neighborhoods with homes fronting the streets. They will utilize the rear access alley for the automobiles so that the homes will front the street without having front-loaded garages or anything like that that would be inconsistent with the neighborhood. It does provide a range of housing choices for this neighborhood. And it supports a variety of transportation choices also by having infill development in an area close to 8th Avenue where there is access to transportation, like buses. So once again, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all of the conditions.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing now and hear from the applicant. You have up to 10 minutes and can reserve up to two of those for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission and staff. I'm Roy Dale with Dale &amp; Associates Engineering here in Nashville. I reside at 1657 Stokely Lane in Old Hickory, and I am representing the applicant today on the White Avenue cottages. First, as always, I want to express my appreciation to staff. I know they spent a lot of time and effort on this, and ultimately, they have recommended approval, which makes me happy. We've actually held three community meetings so far. At the first meeting, we were asked, what would the project most likely resemble? And we told them Germantown Court. And I've given you all some photographs. There's like three pages of photographs of Germantown Court that shows the different houses on there. That's located in the Germantown area on Fifth and Madison. And we chose Germantown Court because it's also in a historic area. It's exactly the same number of detached homes, and it's of similar size. Actually, Germantown Court is on a smaller lot. Germantown Court occurs on .47 acres. White Avenue is .57 acres. And also on Germantown Court, you've got 16 foot of frontage on the street. On this property on White Avenue, you've got 150 foot of frontage. So White Avenue is actually bigger, and it'd be less dense than Germantown Court. As we worked through historic, we originally, I think we showed four houses along the frontage. And historic's like, you know, we need to match the rhythm of the community. Let's only put three houses on the front. So we reduced it to three on the front, which created a lot more space. We made those homes larger as well. So if you go to Germantown, you can look in between units and you can see the sides of other units. You won't do that. This will actually be a little bit of an improvement on Germantown in that you'll see the homes in the front, and you'll have clear views all the way to the back. So that's one difference there. I wrote all this down, I got away from it. But the proposal before you today is a specific plan. It has numerous green features, cottage-style homes built around a central courtyard with parking along White Avenue and also along the alley to the rear, which is also just like Germantown Court. The plan has been reviewed by staff and supported by all the reviewing departments of Metro. Throughout our three meetings that we've had, and one was actually attended by Council Member Moore, which was the second meeting, there have been very few concerns about architecture or the overall look. I think people generally like that. But the primary concerns are, does it fit in? Does it set a precedent? Is it suitable in a historic overlay? And are the densities appropriate? Although I've done all I can do to assure them, this project is a little bit of a stalemate because I believe that they want to hear from the Commission. They've heard from the staff. The staff says this is supported. And I think they really want to hear from the Commission as well. I've kept Council Member Moore informed throughout this process. I've talked to her yesterday. She regrets that she cannot be here today, but she too is looking to the Planning Commission's staff and this body to support whatever you think is appropriate for this land use policy. Today, there are three duplexes on this property, which are clearly not historic and detract from the historic overlay of the Woodlands and the Waverly. They could be torn down. They could be rebuilt as three new duplexes under the current zoning and the historic overlay. However, the removal and reconstruction duplex units would not be in conformance with the land use policy because the land use policy supports single-family detached homes, which is what we're proposing today. This site is the perfect location for an infill development, as it has adequate frontage. It has more frontage than Germantown. It has a lot of infrastructure, sidewalks, it has alleys to the rear, and it's close to transportation, being right off of 8th Avenue. As mentioned by the staff in their report to you today, this development meets the critical goals, supporting infill development, walkable neighborhoods, provides for a range of housing choices, and supports a variety of transportation choices. And I know you've got the staff report, and I just want to read one section from their report, which I think is pertinent to this project, as it deals with land use policy. And this is in reference to this SP proposal. This is an example of infill development in an area where infrastructure, adequate infrastructure, with an area of adequate infrastructure, which is appropriate because it does not burden Metro with the cost of maintaining new infrastructure. The additional density also helps support the 8th Avenue corridor, which provides a mixture of goods and services for area residents. The area surrounding the site consists of mostly single-family uses. This proposal will provide an additional housing option. All the units are detached, which helps to preserve the single-family form. Their area is served by adequate sidewalk network and bus service, which is located on 8th Avenue. And so I'll just conclude that I think, as you'll listen to those who decided to speak today, that again, their concerns pretty much will more or less boil down to land use, what is appropriate. We're confident that this cottage-style development is far superior to what exists today. It's far superior to what you could do under the current zoning. This proposal will preserve and enhance the single-family home form that already exists in this community and ultimately meets your goals for the area and is in concurrence with the land use policy. So we would simply ask that you would support the staff for its recommendation for approval. And I'll reserve the two minutes in case something comes up that is out of the clear blue that I'm unaware of. But I think you're going to hear mostly land use type issues, which your experts act. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll now hear from those in favor. Any person supporting this proposal, come forward at this time and be heard. We now hear from those who oppose this proposal. If you'll come forward and give us your name and address, and you have up to two minutes each to speak. Two minutes is all you get. If others are planning to speak, if you could come forward, that would save us a little bit of time. Thank you.
My name's Mary O'Neill. I live at 2109 Grantland Avenue. I've been in the neighborhood at least 25 years, and I've been to many of these zoning meetings. I appreciate you all. One of the things, from living in a historic neighborhood for this long, that I'm so passionate about is that so many of us that have a vested interest in these neighborhoods really feel like that often we are not heard as the people that actually live and care and spend our lives taking care of these homes. This development unfortunately comes on the heels of another recent build in our neighborhood that may have left a bit of a bad taste in some of our mouths. It's a little bit much for us to stomach. However, this build, I did go to Germantown. I think the cottages in Germantown are lovely. I really do. And the houses that they want to take down do not have historic merit. And I think this will benefit our neighborhood. But what I really have a problem with is the three properties on each lot. The lots are small, I know, because I can mow one in about 15 minutes. But setting a precedent of three properties on each lot, I'm very concerned what will happen to the other nonhistoric houses in our neighborhood. Because as you drive all around this part of town, 12th South in our neighborhood, you see Nashville changing so rapidly with huge, tall houses, you know, zero lot lines. And it's really changing the face of the history that we love. As a Realtor, I embrace this change. I look forward to a lot of change. But I do fear that over time, the houses on the back will not be resellable, will not have the value, and in no time will almost turn into what is there now. And the residents that live right across and next to these really are tired of people that live in these homes that don't have a care and respect for their property. Finally, what's not being mentioned here is a tremendous apartment going on at the end of this block. We'll have a new 265 apartments at the end of our street. That's an additional 500 cars probably coming through our neighborhood. I welcome this. I would love this. I would love to see none more than two properties built on each lot. I think that could be done and still be a profit and a benefit for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name's Tom Lerner. I live at 2215 Grantland Avenue. I've lived in the neighborhood since about 1980. I hate to see this. I welcome some new structures. Infill is creative if it's done properly. I look at the footprint of these buildings, and I see high density. It's hard to picture, looking at that slide, but you have houses sitting on top of each other, literally. I believe there's six feet between the two rear houses and 10 feet between the houses, the house on White and the house in the middle. So that's, again, those are houses sitting on top of each other. The little square there, the green space, is approximately 27 feet on a side, I believe, plus maybe another 10 to 15 feet between the houses. And if you picture that, that's less than this. So these, again, these houses are going to be sitting on top of each other. I am afraid, as Mary, that these houses will be hard to sell or maybe hard to resell. I know I would not want to live six feet from my neighbor. You know, you can whisper and hear. Another thing, this neighborhood started in the early 1900s, and the founders of our neighborhood are a who's who of Nashville. Got Groundland, McGavick, DeMumbray. Those people started our neighborhood.
Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Horton, and my husband and I live at 726 Benton, which is at the north end of White Avenue. We also own rental property across from the proposed development. And when I read the guidelines of the historic overlay, it says that the historic overlay shall prevail. So I like that because that means it will prevail. To me, it means it'll prevail over the SP. Maybe not, but I think we might need a legal opinion from Metro Legal. And if that's the case, there are a lot of communities in the county that ought to beware that their conservation districts are going to be in danger if we let SPs take over, like eight houses in a little tiny space. That's not historic. So I guess I would beg the Commission to please look at the legality of it, because we are historic for 30 years and the overlay says the overlay will prevail. Maybe not, but I'd like an opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Pete Horton. I've had long experience in both environmental planning and economic development, and I try to keep them separate. I see this more as an economic development planning outfit. We've had long experience in living in historic homes. Our first was 168 years, then 194 years. The second one, the one we're in now, is 93 years. We've benefited greatly from the increased value of dealing in historic homes like that and think this could benefit our neighbors. I meant to bring up an article from this morning's Tennessean by Professor Arthur Nelson, University of Utah, who spoke to the Civic Design Center. He said that it was the feeling that when you did a subdivision that it could last for as long as 170 years. So that would give our Woodland and Waverly another 50 years lifespan, and that goes along with the houses we've lived in. So how should we plan for a historic neighborhood like that? Do we want to just treat it like everywhere else and do everything there that you do everywhere else? Or should we treat it as this historic neighborhood and cater to people who like to live in old historic homes? And that would include college students, where widows and so forth are glad to have somebody upstairs or in the back. We have a totally diversified neighborhood, residents diversified in every way. It's sort of a working-class neighborhood. But Mr. Nelson, the professor, said that generation wires and the millennials are less likely to want to buy homes in the future, especially the bigger, old-fashioned homes. He says, he thinks that the real estate market is sort of going to be oversold, and a lot of older people, I mean, people that are younger than I am. I have five minutes because I'm representing the Woodland and Waverly Association.
Oh, thank you. I didn't ask that, but if you're an official representative, you do have up to five minutes.
Right. I'm the president of that.
But other people in the neighborhood, then you represent them, and they don't have the individual right to speak. They understand that.
What's that?
If you're representing the neighborhood, then the other members of the neighborhood, if you're taking the five minutes, the other members have to speak on their own. They can't speak from the neighborhood's perspective.
If they're part of the Neighborhood Association.
Right. They're speaking on their own.
Is that true?
I think I'm speaking last. Well, Betty, you going to speak? Betty wants to speak after me.
All right. Well, why don't you sort of condense what you have left to keep within the spirit of the rule we have?
Well, I'm always being condensed, and the spirit wasn't expressed in what I've read. Okay? So I'll speed it up here as much as possible. But the professor said that a lot of older people, and these are people younger than us, are going to have trouble selling their homes. He expects a real spurt of older homes about 2016. So he says, a lot of people are going to have to decide they're going to age and place whether they want to or not. Well, that's great. Let's do that. Why try to impose a different demographic in a neighborhood of boring, older people? And a lot of younger families are calling, they like their yards and so forth. Why suddenly start getting to people who don't want a yard? You have five homes around a grass patch, I don't know, maybe 30, 35 foot square. If you put all the houses in the normal alignment, everybody could at least have a patch of grass to go out that is theirs. So I don't think that it's good planning to impose an SP-specific plan in the middle of an otherwise intact historic neighborhood. And there's no mention of the historic preservation in the staff's report. They list some critical goals, flexibility of design. No, no. The Historic Commission goes over our design. Infill development. We don't need any infill. We're already filled up. You're going to tear something down so you can have more zoning, put more stuff in? We're already, I don't think there's a vacant lot left. A range of housing choices, we already have that. This is, SP is just sort of more churning. There's only an obligatory reference to the Historic Zoning Commission, but nothing about the community character, which includes gardens and lawns and stuff like that. So I don't think turning a historic neighborhood indiscriminately into something for everybody. Can't we have little plots around the city where you can do specialized things? Six properly-aligned homes, I think everybody would be fine. They welcome that, enjoy having new investment. But they just don't like the idea of having homes crosslots backed up to the neighbors. It's a whole new concept, and it's going to, we think it's going to lead to everybody thinking of all kinds of strange things to do. We think they'd do just fine with six little bigger, little better quality homes and join with the rest of us in the traditional format. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from other opponents, if they're not members of that Neighborhood Association. And if you are, then you cannot speak.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. It seems like in the past, we have allowed others within the neighborhood to speak on their own behalf.
own behalf.
Right.
And I was wanting clarification.
If they're represented by...
Even, even when they were represented by, where their Neighborhood Association was represented by an individual. And I just wanted clarification on the rules.
All right.
Because I, you know, I don't know that we...
It doesn't come up every day.
Right. Thank you.
Well, I guess we'll ask our legal staff. I was reading the, the rule, which says, when prior to the meeting, written notice has been received by the commission authorizing a representative to speak on behalf of an organization, the representative may speak for up to five minutes. And then persons speaking as individuals not represented by an organization may speak for up to two minutes. So I guess I'll ask legal counsel what their interpretation is of that rule.
That was the rule that I was actually looking at as well. And I think 7A2, person speaking as individuals not represented by an organization may speak up to two minutes. So if, if there are persons here who want to speak as individuals who are not represented by that organization and that person did not speak on their behalf, then I think, if they're not, they can, they can speak for two minutes. But if they are, if that person spoke on their behalf, and essentially, I think what is, what the goal here is, so that people are not saying the same thing over and over for the board to be considered. It's possible that person could be a member of an organization, perhaps, and not share the view that was articulated by the, the Homeowners Association group. In that case, I would err on the side of caution and advise the board to allow those persons to speak. However, if they're going to say the same thing, then I think their representation by the Homeowners Association should suffice.
The purpose of the rule, I think we all, most of us remember, was to help consolidate comments. So the meaning of the rule would mean no one could speak, since it's not, no one could speak who's part of that association. But we will try to clarify that rule since there's dissension on the commission and since you've advised us to be...
And in a balance of caution.
Err, err on the side of generosity. So, yes.
And I'll be happy to try to work on some revisions and get some...
Yes, because right now we have a rule that is meaningless.
My name is Betty Smith and I live at 2101 Lindell Avenue. And I agree, this looks a lot better than what's there now, but when we asked the developers, what other areas in the neighborhood could they potentially do the same thing, they highlighted an area that I live in. I just got my little 1,200 square foot house paid for. If this goes through and they come after the area where I live, where am I going to live? You know, and if, even if I decide not to and everybody else does, I'm going to be saddled in between my little house and between these big two-story house. When I first moved there, a lot on one side was empty. Now I got a $500,000 house on that side. And I've been fighting with, 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 with the county court clerk to keep my taxes down because I'm not in a historic house and I'm not in a $500,000 house. So if this goes through on White Avenue and the next area they want to come through is on Lindell Avenue, which includes one of the little houses I'm in, I don't know what we're going to do if they start, people start to sail all around me and I'm just clustering my little house in between all these big two-story houses. And for that reason, I'm opposed to changing the zoning in the neighborhood so that they can start doing this in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
I'm the trustee for 2117 White Avenue. So this is in line of sight to my property.
Give us your name for it.
My name is Carol Simpson. The property is the Van Grift Trust property. I'm, I spoke with someone earlier today, a contractor, to start working on doing some restoration to my property. It was purchased by my aunt and uncle in 1952. The tax office in Nashville says that the property was built in 1952. I think that was because that's the year they bought it. In fact, it was built around 1900. There's some discrepancy about whether it was 1896 or 1906. But irregardless, there are, there's a duplex on one side, there are two duplexes on the other side. My house is one of the older two-story houses and it is big. If this goes through on these three lots and my house is one, there's a duplex here, my house, and then two duplexes here, what's to stop someone from developing and coming and telling me that I must be a part of this or that the three lots across from me, beside me, are going to become the same thing? It's, I think you're setting a precedent. It's kind of scary. It's a slippery slope in a neighborhood that's already deemed to be historic. The property, as I'm looking at this, the parking's questionable for this density in the neighborhood. Some of these people, and I don't know how many, are willing to park in the alley. I never see anybody drive down the alley behind White Avenue, behind my side of White Avenue. I have to wonder how many of them are going to be parking on the street? How many more people are going to be parking on the street if this is allowed to continue? And then you, and the developer comes up and says, we want to continue this procedure, this policy in this neighborhood. At what point does Woodlands and Waverly stop being a historic neighborhood? Granted, the properties that are there now are not historic. They're duplexes, they were placed what was there originally. But what was there originally would have been a single-family home on one lot. I just, I'm curious, I'm concerned that you're talking about putting this higher density in this neighborhood, where do you stop? Where do you draw a line?
Thank you.
I'm concerned about that because I think that you may be going down a road that might not be ultimately the best, but I'm concerned that maybe citizens sometime in the future are going to look back and question, what were we thinking? Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other testimony, I'll declare the public hearing closed, except for the proponents' two minutes. I'm sorry, I forgot that.
I appreciate it. There's two things I can clear up really quickly. One is that obviously this is one parcel. It's not individual parcels. I think one individual talked about three lots on individual parcels. That's not the case. And then when I met with the community at the second community meeting, they asked me, are there any other lots within the development that could develop as a cottage? So, you know, I did the best I could. I went in, I looked for other lots that were wide enough. I pretty well decided for someone to do something similar, it would probably take three duplexes adjacent to each other. It would also take an alley on the rear. And so within that whole development, I only saw two areas that that could occur. Not that this proponents, not that they're wanting to do that, they're not wanting to do that. I was just asked a question and I answered it. So this doesn't really start a real precedent. This is a great thing for this community. What I really hear is more concerns about this is a little change, we're a little uneasy about that. We like the development. I don't hear anything really negative about the style of the development itself. It's just normal concerns that I think citizens would have when you're looking at something a little different. And I think I'd ask you to look right back to Germantown Court again. It's in a historic area. It is very successful. When I went and took photographs, the day I took the pictures out there, one of the residents was selling their home. They were selling it for much more than what they purchased it for. So this type of development within Woodlands and Waverly is going to enhance the value. It's going to continue preservation of the single-family detached housing, which the land use policy and the staff has recommended. And so I think it's a great thing. And I think through time, they'll realize that and they'll embrace this project. And so I would ask for you to support this. Support the staff, support the staff's recommendations. This has been reviewed by all the agencies. It did go to historic. We will go back to historic again when we have final building plans and we will adhere to all of their architectural requirements. So that being said, I appreciate your time and I would hope that you would support this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Public hearing is closed. And before we start the commissioners' discussion, we were asked a specific question during the testimony relative to, I'm sorry.
They said a motion to close the public hearing. Chairman can declare the public hearing closed.
We can have a motion if you want. Go ahead.
I move to close the public hearing.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, vote aye. Opposed, vote no. Okay. I guess I would like to, to ask, to re-ask the question that someone raised. The, the relationship between this SP proposal and historic, the historic overlay, and I guess that goes to who? Who would prefer to answer that? Legal staff or the director?
I can start, Nick. You have the one here from the story.
Right.
The historic guidelines are going to cover the, the design and the exterior. It's not going to really, they don't have review really of the zoning, which is what we're dealing with today in the SP. So to the extent that there's a rendering or something like that that is proposed today with the SP, historic is going to have the final say on what their rendering actually looks like and, and what is required architecturally and, and design-wise. I will yield to, to, I think Robin Ziegler is here for more specifics on that, but that's essentially the relationship. And they will have an opportunity to review this, but it goes to planning first on the zoning issue because if you don't allow the zoning, it wouldn't matter what the design looks like.
So our, our purview is not really the design at all. It's the zoning and the land use issue.
It's really the zoning and the, the number of lots and the, the way the, the lots are arranged and the housing is arranged, more so than the actual design as far as the materials that are going to be used, the shingles, the roofing, the cladding and all of those things. And those things are going to be reviewed by historic.
All right. Robin? Is Robin here?
No, Robin, here is. Yeah, she's here.
Okay.
Sorry, way in the back.
Yes, can you, how do you frame this for folks, the different decision-making authority between the two?
That's my understanding as well. Your role really is to review the, the zoning and the number of units and the plot, the plat and how it's laid out. And then if it's approved, then it will come to Metro Historic Zoning Commission for review of the elevations.
All right. And the elevations for folks here mean what? The actual...
The exterior of all four sides of all of the buildings.
Because this is historic.
It's a historic neighborhood.
Not conservation.
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
I would point out also that we did work with the Historical Commission to make sure that the rhythm of the buildings along there matched the rhythm of the historic rhythm of the buildings along the street.
That's correct. We learned a few things with Germantown Court and we asked for those same kinds of things in this project and what you see before you is, reflects all those changes that they made.
Okay. Any questions? Yes?
I have one other question for Robin. Just to clarify, within this historic overlay, demolition of contributing structures, historic structures, also have to be approved by the Metro Historic Zoning Commission. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so in this case, these are not considered historic or contributing?
That's right. Now, there is that process. The Metro Historic Zoning Commission will still need to review the demolition of those buildings, but they are non-contributing, they are not historic, and so the expectation is that they'll be approved for demolition.
Thank you.
May I?
Any other questions?
There was a concern, and I don't know if you are the correct person, but there was a concern about the height of the homes and that it would overshadow an existing house. So you may have a house here and a big two-story here. Will you oversee that also?
Yes, we will look at the height. Now, that's not to say that it may not, that it may be taller than the house next door because it is an eclectic neighborhood and you do have very small homes and medium homes and large homes. So that eclecticism of the neighborhood will continue.
You know, I would point out that there is a limit of two stories on this, which is a lower limit than what the zoning would actually allow today.
Yes, thank you. I was just out of curiosity. I know I'm looking at White Avenue. What are the other streets that surround this particular development? And where are the historic areas in this particular?
Where are the other historic structures?
The boundary.
It's all the names of the streets.
Right, the name of the street.
Robin may have to help me on the boundary of the historic district here, so if you want to come over.
I apologize, I can't remember every single piece off the top of my head, but it's essentially, you see the interstate to one side, it's from there all the way over to the alley that's between the neighborhood and Eighth Avenue, which of course is commercial. And it's from Benton, the home's on Benton, and I think there's a little bit further north as well, and then south to Bradford. That's generally, there's, there's some more, but that you don't see on the map.
This is basically at the intersection of Wedgewood and Eighth Avenue.
Pretty large area. Thank you. That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
And there are a fair number of non-contributing structures in the district.
There are some. I have to say though, that if you take Lindell out, which again, it parallels the interstate, which has a high concentration of non-contributing buildings. If you were to take that section out, the rest of the neighborhood has a high concentration of contributing buildings. So as one of the people were speaking about Lindell, that is a different, has a very different context than the rest of the neighborhood.
All right. Any other questions for, for Robin?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we ready to discuss? All right. Andre, would you like to begin our discussion?
I guess I need to make a disclaimer. I did the Germantown Court project as the first courthouse project in Nashville, courtyard development. And it is adjacent to buildings built in 1800s that are two stories bigger than the ones that were built on the project that's shown. I guess I'm biased a little bit, I'll say, because I feel like it has been successful in the neighborhood. There've been, one of the concerns I heard, first of all, I want to say thank you to the people that came because the level of concern and intelligence and questioning is always helpful for us to hear. One of the concerns I heard was that the houses won't resell easily and that they'll maybe decline the ones in the rear. And at least in Germantown, the ones, they've been constant, over, I mean, they, not constant, but I mean, the ones that have sold, have sold for more than the prior sale. And again, it's continued in that pattern. And so they have continued to hold value and increase in value, even the ones in the back. The, the things that, that hit our general planning buttons are the, the pervious paving, pervious paving, all the attention to water and all those sorts of things that make it a sustainable project. But I think in the bigger concept, a cottage development allows a variety of housing. This one has some that are larger than others. It allows the younger generation to move in, it allows older people to age in place, as you mentioned. It allows, it's a horizontal property regime probably, and so there is some green space, but it's low maintenance. So for, there are some people who don't want a big yard and they still get the advantage of the green, but have low maintenance because it's not a giant area. I think the, I'm just trying to think of what some of the other concerns I heard were. I feel like in general, with the Historic Commission reviewing the design, I think already being attentive to the rhythm of the street helps. That, that makes a difference because when you're walking down the block, you want to feel like you're in the same neighborhood you were already in and that you don't feel like there's suddenly something jarring you. And I think this, this project, the way it's arranged, does allow for that. It doesn't change the, the atmosphere of the block in a negative way, but it does contribute to the ability to have transit. I think our SP does add some design restrictions. We have to have, we can, we determine that there's a buffer. I mean, there's certain things that we can control on the design and the site that I noticed, we've already got some of those in here with the buffers that they've addressed. The parking in the rear helps keep people off the street and the alleys in Germantown, people do use them and they park in them. People I know who live around in this neighborhood use their alleys too, so I don't know if that's a problem particularly on this alley. I hadn't seen that. I think, I'm just trying to think if there's anything else. I, I think it's exciting. I think that it's a project that can, can contribute to the neighborhood with a variety of, of uses that allow for different people of different economic backgrounds to be able to, to live comfortably there and have a simple existence, which is, I think, what people, a lot of people are looking for.
Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I look at the, the project, I see a lot of the great things. I think the good things about the project too, which all came out is, you know, it's very transit-oriented. It's a very walkable project. It seems like the infill is, is good, is a good thing. You know, by right, I had a little bit of question, Rick, that you had brought up, was that what currently could they build there by right if they just tore down the two, the three duplexes?
They could build three new duplexes. I mean...
And to what height? That's what piqued my interest.
Forty, 45 feet.
Yeah, in that, in that area.
In that area, I think it's forty-five plus the foundation, seven-foot foundation.
So, it'd be three stories.
Yeah. One thing that we looked at, and there's a tremendous amount of infill development in this area, 12 South, I mean, there's a lot of that. We felt very comfortable that what you're likely to get here are much more diverse housing than otherwise would be allowed, which, in effect, what you're likely to get if this doesn't go through are two of the larger front-to-back duplexes that will, it'll be larger in size and sell for a lot more than what these are likely to sell for. So, we felt like those would be much more out of context. I mean, obviously, they had to be reviewed by Historic, but they still have the right to be much more out of context than what limits are being put on these.
Thank you. I think that's what really pulls at me, is that I think that this proposal seems to make more sense for the character of the community, rather than building, you know, three really large duplexes that don't fit in in the neighborhood by right. So, and also that it's been tested in Nashville. You know, this is not a brand-new concept here in Nashville, and that, I'm very familiar with the Germantown development as well, and I, you know, I know some friends that live there, and they love it. And so, from that perspective, I think that this project makes sense. I did have a question, so, about parking. So, is there 12 parking spaces, and then in unit six, there would be a small garage or something, is it?
Right, that's correct. And then there's several on-street spaces as well.
Okay. And then I think I'm, I understand the Historical Commission process and am very comfortable with the process that it would remain in the character of a historical perspective, so I'm leaning towards voting for the proposal.
Jeff?
No comment.
Hunter?
I don't really have anything to add. I appreciate the neighborhood's concerns and concerns about change, and again, as a non-biased person, having experienced these types of courtyard cottage projects, they've really added value to the neighborhood, and especially in situations where you have vacant lots or you have non-contributing structures that have often, I don't know if these are rental structures necessarily, but where you're replacing some buildings that just don't fit in, these types of projects have really added value to the neighborhood, and increase in a couple of units with approximately two spaces per unit, if you count the on-street parking spaces there. I'm really pretty comfortable with this, and I guess as the representative on the Historic Zoning Commission, I know that that commission will be looking closely at the details of the architectural design to make sure it fits into the historic neighborhood as well.
Judy?
I just have one question. There was a mention, I think from Historical Society, when we looked at the boundaries, you said something about Lindell not having contributing structures. Could you just reframe that for me?
I suggested kind of visually taking that out of the equation, because there's so many non-contributing buildings on that street, but the rest of the neighborhood has very high concentration of historic buildings. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Excuse me. Is that an action that, something that we would need to do today or could do today?
I don't think she's suggesting removing it from the historic district, no.
No, 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 I was just explaining that, you know, if you just mentally kind of remove that, because it's such a different animal from the rest of the district.
Right, because it backs right up to 65, and they finally just got a wall there.
There's still historic buildings. Right, there's still historic buildings there, it's still a part of the neighborhood, it will continue to be a part of the neighborhood, but there's different opportunities there than in the rest of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, Phil?
There's a lot of thought that went into this. It looks very good to me. I do have one question about parking. Currently, the three duplexes, do they have parking in the alley, designated parking on the property?
You can sort of see it from this aerial photo, that they're, they appear to be parking kind of in the rear yard.
Oh, okay, so they're making parking, okay.
I would point out that property immediately adjacent actually has a parking pad in the back for those units.
There was, one of the concerns that was brought up was about the additional cars, neighborhood traffic, and generally, if you assume, and looking at this picture, it must be about two, I don't know if there's two cars, or some out here in the front, so, anyway, it's on the street, so assuming that there are two per unit here, that's 12 cars, and in the new proposal, you would have 16 cars, so you're looking really at a net difference there of four cars, and I don't think that would really be a significant amount to make the traffic that much worse. So, I think it's good.
Councilman Hunt?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I was just thinking about what the lady said about taxes, which we hear quite often, you know, taxes going up, taxes going down, depending on what's in the neighborhood. Then, listening to the non-contributing structures, they would tend to decrease tax value because there wouldn't be anything new or a value increase because it's a non-contributing structure. And I'm taking that as if it's an older structure that's already been there and it don't contribute to what this proposal here is doing, which means that if you get a new structure in, like this proposed, like the lady was saying, that taxes go up, along with some of the other ones that's already there. Now, my take in there, from what I've seen, a lot of people want their value, property value to go up, because when it goes down, it creates a problem in terms of, you know, condemning and people running off leaving it. So, for that purpose, I think that, to me, look like new developments like that will fare better in the community as opposed to non-contributing structures in terms of keeping property values up and keep the community moving. So, I have to say, I like that particular approach, because I've seen both approach. Now, I don't know exactly what non-contributing structure actually means, is it's something that's on the fence and could be restructured later on into developing a new development like they're doing here, proposing here. So, but if that's the case, I have to support this project, because it tends to increase the value in the community.
Would the staff address what specifically you mean by non-contributing structure in this case?
Right, when the historic overlay is applied to an area, there are certain houses in that overlay that actually meet the guidelines of the historic overlay, the design of the homes, and then there's certain homes sometimes that are considered non-contributing that are in the overlay, they're zoned with that historic overlay, but they don't actually meet those guidelines, and they aren't historic in nature, and those are the ones that, even though Historic, the Historical Commission will still review any demolition permits for those, those are the ones that, like Robin said, are a little bit more likely to get a demolition permit if they're not deemed historic.
Have we actually ever not, as a city, given a demolition permit for non-contributing use?
Never, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, discussions, or questions before we seek a motion? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve with all conditions set out by staff.
Mr. Chairman, I mentioned my bias, so I'm going to abstain from voting.
Which is a voluntary abstention, because under the law, there is not a conflict, as you described, but you feel that, so that's fine. Okay. Other comments, questions? All those in favor of the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
Those who vote no, it passes, and one abstention. Thank you. Our next item is number five, is it? Number five. If the, this is the Riverside Drive item, and if the proponent could come forward.
Mr. Chairman, the proponent was the council member.
That's right. We already heard from the proponent. We've heard from him earlier. Are there other members of?
Do you want to have the presentation?
Oh, yeah, we want to do that. Yeah, this isn't as easy as it looks. Yes, I'm sorry, I asked you to come forward, but we haven't heard the staff presentation yet, so that was a little premature.
The council member did want me to express his apologies that he had to leave early. Mr. Chairman, as you mentioned, this is item number five on your agenda. This is a zone change request for multiple properties located in the Riverside Village commercial node. The commercial node is located in the Inglewood neighborhood of East Nashville and situated around the intersection of McGavick Pike and Riverside Drive. The request is to change the properties from their various zoning districts to MULA and MUNA districts. Here's a closer view of the properties included in this zone change request, and staff's recommendation is to approve with the housekeeping amendment to the community plan. The existing zoning applied to the parcels varies from commercial, mixed-use, as well as residential zoning. The properties having, included in this zone change, having frontage on McGavick Pike, are all proposed for mixed-use limited A districts. Those mixed-use, the mixed-use A district permits, or specifically, the mixed-use limited A district permits a moderately intense mixture of uses and is designed to create walkable neighborhoods with appropriate building and parking placement as well as bulk standards. The properties included in this zone change that are situated away from that McGavick Pike corridor are proposed for mixed-use neighborhood A districts. Those have the same design principles, however, permit a lower intensity mixture of uses. The policy applied to this neighborhood center, or this commercial node, is neighborhood center for the majority of the properties involved. Neighborhood center promotes small, intense, local centers of mixed activities that are oriented to and supportive of surrounding residential neighborhoods. There's one portion included in this zone change that is not included in the neighborhood center policy area, and staff is recommending a housekeeping amendment to include that parcel in the neighborhood center. It's currently, it is that one triangular piece located on the southern end. I'm sorry, of this.
Just use your pointer there, here.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is this triangular piece that's included in the zone change. It has a policy of neighborhood general, but staff is recommending housekeeping amendment to include that parcel in the neighborhood center. Staff's recommending the housekeeping amendment that that parcel is adjacent to neighborhood center policy properties, both to the east and west. We feel like including that in the neighborhood center would provide some continuity in the neighborhood center boundary. It would also allow that property to be used in support of the more intense parcels having frontage on McGavick Pike. It would also allow for a better transition of the neighborhood center away to the residential neighborhoods. There's also a special policy applied to this neighborhood center, it's outlined in purple, it's for those parcels with the neighborhood center policy on Riverside Drive, moving away from the McGavick Pike area or corridor. That special policy suggests that zoning transitions down as the neighborhood center moves away from the McGavick Pike corridor specifically calls for the use of a mixed-use neighborhood zoning district, which is proposed for those parcels included in this zone change. The mixed-use zoning districts proposed are supported by this neighborhood center policy. This zoning request for the mixed-use A districts supports several planning, critical planning goals, including the creation of walkable neighborhoods. It supports a variety of transportation choices, including the two MTA bus lines that run through this neighborhood center. The mixed-use districts provide for a range of housing choices and overall support infill development. The proposed zone change, the proposed zone change with the mixed-use, the mixed-use districts will help create a uniform zoning pattern for this neighborhood center. It'll help implement the neighborhood center policy, and it, again, it meets several planning, critical planning goals. So, in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the zone change request with the housekeeping amendment to the community plan.
I would just remind the commission that the two properties on Riverside that are also in the neighborhood center were removed from the rezoning at the request of that property owner. So, I mean, they would be obviously consistent when the property owner wants to move forward with his own.
We're now ready to open the public hearing. We have heard from the proponent, the council member. Are there others who wish to speak in support of the proposal first? Okay, are there those who would wish to speak against this proposal? This would be the.
I'll be confused about what the gentleman just said, Dan. According to this letter here, this lot 238 was to be changed to commercial. And you say it's part of the community center, is that what, is that correct?
Would you address that for us?
Parcel 238 is that triangular piece down at the southern end that's proposed for mixed-use neighborhood.
This here says it's going to go to commercial. So.
The rezoning is to mixed-use neighborhood. It's a mixed-use, it allows commercial as well as residential office.
That's what I'm getting at. Number one, Oakhurst Drive does not cross Riverside Drive. Oakhurst Drive runs west 200 feet to a stone wall, and across that stone wall is a steel barrier. That barrier, that curve is so sharp, it's at least 70 feet long. And they're wanting to make a, zone it to commercial. And I have lived there since 1955 in the property adjoining. I'm the one that lives at those two lots that we were talking about that was taken out to keep it from going that way. And with that street ending there, it just don't make sense to make it a commercial neighborhood, because it's only, if you go on that, on the west side of Riverside Drive, you've got to get on private property to turn around. It's just a simply a dead-end street, it's never been improved, and what works done on it is what the neighbors do. And I'm astonished, you know, that if they would ask, with it being where that location is, into a commercial. But now, I believe he said he was going to a neighborhood use, is that correct?
Correct.
Would you explain to him exactly what that means, mixed-use versus what can be done now?
The current zoning is R6, and this zone change would apply a mixed-use neighborhood A district. The mixed-use neighborhood permits a variety of uses, including commercial, office, and residential uses.
So, it does extend it to commercial, low intensity commercial.
Correct.
But it would allow, as I understand it, complete coverage in parking area. In other words, there's a building on it now.
It would allow parking, yes.
Sir?
Yes, it would allow parking, but.
Wall-to-wall parking.
Well, it's not wall-to-wall, because if you've got to deal with stormwater, there's a lot of other issues. You've got buffering.
Across the street, they have a similar, and there was 17 cars on the 50-foot lot, so. So, that's what I'm saying, it causes a lot of drainage problems, and I'm the only property owner involved, or at least it goes completely across my property, and.
So, your statement is that you're opposed to this one lot being moved into the mixed-use zoning from residential, and you own these two lots, 236 and 237?
Yes, sir, I believe that's right. Yeah.
Okay.
I hope you'll consider it, because it's not easy to be here again, so.
All right.
A neighbor, they've all been very fine cooperative, but I just can't.
But our understanding, I just want to be sure I understand your question. Our understanding is that those two lots are not going to be getting the new zoning of mixed-use, they're going to stay residential zoning.
No, no, they're going, my two lots are going to stay that, but there's a lot of crawl all across the back, is what I'm concerned with. The problems that a complete paving would.
I just want to be sure I understood, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there other persons in opposition to this proposal who wish to speak?
I'm with them.
Okay.
May I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Ollie, ma'am. We've lived there since 1954, raised a family. We have beautiful flowers. I'm Ollie Mims. We've lived there since 1954, raised a family. We have beautiful flowers in our yard. Our property enhances the neighborhood. Our owning and the water, the improvement of changes that they have already made, the water is coming down across our two lots. It's an elevation of approximately as high as this, and there's nothing, and the water comes down and gets in our basement.
Right.
Number one. We liked Riverside Drive, that we're happy that they try to keep the medium because it is Memorial Drive. We're part of it in that we try to do more than our share to keep it nice. We've cooperated with the businesses that have already been there. However, businesses, we're concerned about also when the businesses leave, then what? There's one business there now, with my count and memory, that's been there 15 years. We moved there in 1954. So businesses, they go and they come, and we have had wonderful businesses over the years. But we hate the change of what comes next. But the water problem now is, that's already in effect. It comes off over down into our property. We maintain our property and grow flowers, and people seem to enjoy seeing that as they go up there to the corner. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this proposal? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Somebody.
All those in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
No. The public hearing is closed. We'll start with Hunter and go this way.
I frequent this area, live maybe a mile and a half from here, and I do enjoy seeing your flowers. I hope they stay. You know, this is a situation where, you know, where we're seeing some great things happen in maybe an unexpected way over the years. This little neighborhood center has sort of slowly evolved into a very active, and it's probably gone through generations of, you know, decline and activity and decline and so on over the years, I'm sure. But I think what we don't know, and maybe was alluded to with the question about parking, is, you know, how, you know, how these types of neighborhood centers are going to deal with the parking challenges. And we've seen it in other locations. And so on one hand, you know, the concern about having a parking lot on a piece of property that was formerly zoned residential doesn't sound like a great solution. On the other hand, as these neighborhood centers succeed, the parking demand increases and the challenge is otherwise. So, you know, I think this is a good plan. I do have one question, or two questions. One for staff regarding the rezoning. The, I know there's, it's probably complex, and you may not be able to answer this specifically, but because there are different types of commercial zoning in this area currently, is the net, do you know if the net FAR, the floor area ratio, basically the amount of development that could occur in this area, does it increase, decrease, stay virtually the same? I don't know if you all looked at that or not. And I'm just talking about the currently, I'm sure that with the residential changing to commercial, that would increase, but just the commercial areas.
The existing zoning presents several FARs. For the properties that have frontage on McGavick Pike, you have OR 20, which permits an FAR of .75, MUL, which provides an FAR of 1. The CN is a little bit lower. So you will find that there will be an increase in the permitted FAR for properties along McGavick Pike. I didn't do an analysis that studies proposed FAR with what exists today on that corridor. Just in terms of zoning, there would be some increase in the FAR permitted along that corridor. For the residential properties, the FAR will move from .4 FAR for the residentially zoned properties. MUN presents an FAR of .6. So it's an increase. I don't know that you can call it a great increase.
And remind me, is this area in the UZEO, the urban zoning overlay?
Yes, it is. This entire node is in the UZEO.
Okay. So with the potential increase in development rights, commercial development rights, there's also going to be an increased parking demand. And so, you know, I think having some additional properties that very well could turn into parking lots is maybe not a bad thing for the neighborhood. And I know we now have landscape requirements. If they were to pave any of these lots for parking, there would be landscape requirements and buffers and so on that would apply. Is that correct?
That's absolutely right. The one thing that I would offer, Commissioner, is that in the MUN district, you cannot do a principal use parking lot. So in that MUN district or the portion zoned MUN, you couldn't tear the house down and just have a parking lot on those properties.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. And then my second question, Steve, is related to stormwater. If I could ask Steve Mishe with Metro Stormwater to address the concerns of the neighbors here that, I guess, currently have some issues, and then as development occurs, how that will be dealt with for Metro?
Sure thing. Steve Mishe with Metro Stormwater. I did have the pleasure of meeting with Mr. and Mrs. Mims yesterday, and their main concerns right now is that parcels 235 and 233 already have existing buildings, and sometime between probably eight to 10 years ago, they've kind of built a parking lot there. There was kind of like a drive there, and they've kind of extended it a little bit further, and it almost comes to the property line, and it will go through the unimproved alley. Then it'll go through Lot 236, which is undeveloped, still owned by them, and then it'll come to their property. I can say for Lot 238, whenever it comes in, I've already flagged it in Kiva, our database system that, you know, all the departments use, that we will make sure that that parcel doesn't make anything worse for them. But unfortunately, they still have a little bit of a problem because they already have a parking lot that's draining to them from parcels 233 and 235. The only thing I could say is hopefully that the owner of those two properties will step up and try to meet with them and see if he could do something to help them out.
But if those properties redevelop, they would be required to deal with the runoff in a better way than it's currently dealt with? Is that correct?
Well, most of.
235 and 233 were to redevelop?
Those are already redeveloped. So when, if they redevelop once again, you know, obviously they're not going to increase the impervious area too much anyway because it's already, it's either gravel or a paved. I couldn't tell by the aerials. Like I said, we could do something for 238, but 233 and 235 are unfortunately already over there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And sorry, I have one other question. I noticed someone from Public Works here. And staff may have mentioned this, but what I like about this proposal is the A districts will solve what I think is an issue with this area right now, and that is that most of the street along McGavick and even parts of Riverside, the street just runs right into parking areas with no curb, no defined access points, and so there's cars backing in and out of the street, and the buildings sit back. And so with the new set, or the build-to lines, which the A's zoning districts require, if redeveloped with new construction, you can see it, the pavement sort of just all runs together there. But I think I saw recently that, is Public Works planning a project there to improve the intersection?
We do have a plan that's in process. I don't have the details with me, but our capital section, they have, there is a plan that is in process to improve this intersection here.
Is that streetscape or traffic flow or, you don't know?
I don't have the details of that. I am familiar. There is something there. I just don't know what the details are of it.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. And that was my question about the stormwater. But I have one other question, a concern that was raised by one of the neighbors about how you drive onto the property and it goes into a stone wall and you have to turn, and can you just share, enlighten, what that looks like?
I think what the gentleman was referring to is how Maxi Lane bends at this corner.
Uh-huh. Oh, okay. So that's a street.
So then he may have also been discussing how Oakhurst comes across, it actually does not cross the median. While the right-of-way is established here, the street is not in place.
So people use it, but it's not a street?
There are several properties that use it currently as a driveway entrance.
As a driveway.
Into their properties. It does not come across all the way right now.
So when this is developed, it will use Maxi Lane?
When this, this being the triangular piece?
Yes.
When this is developed, it's possible that it would use Maxi Lane. I would submit that this parcel is owned by the same person that owns these parcels, actually owns a couple of others within the center, and has provided a plan that shows how this parcel will tie into the redevelopment of these sites to provide additional parking, but also it anticipates reusing the house there for some small office space. So it's certainly possible, conceivable, that they could use Maxi Lane principally, but it's anticipated, at least at this point, that it would be tied into the neighborhood center.
Okay. That was my other question. Thank you.
Phil?
Well, I did have just a general question. It's been partially answered just by that last statement, and that is why we actually have an MUNA attached to this. Now, I think I understand if you say that that's, that one triangular section is going to be kind of a, you know, dependent, that's attached to those other two for future development. Is that what it is? Basically, is that why we are including these two green areas down here?
Well, first, this green area is included in the neighborhood center, in the community plan.
Right.
These parcels are included in the community center, I'm sorry, in the neighborhood center. This parcel was not included in the community center at that point. I can't tell you why it was not included in the neighborhood center, but it's being requested as a housekeeping amendment to be included in the neighborhood center because it's contiguous or it provides some continuity. It is easily tied into. But also, it helps this MUL intensity, neighborhood center transition down and away into that neighborhood. So applying the MUNA district allows for the same mixture of uses, but at a much lower development intensity. And so, again, it helps that transition as the core of the center moves away from and into the neighborhood.
Okay, I understand what you just said, but let me ask another question related to that. Why didn't you make it all MUL instead of having two different ones?
Why did we not? I'm sorry.
Yeah, the intent was to step down the intensity as you move closer to the residential and the more residential. You wanted the intensity up on McGavick and then step down as you moved back into the neighborhood. So it's less intense.
Okay. That helps. Thank you.
Councilman, huh?
Yes, thank you. I was just looking at this, the way it's written up. These two pieces of property is owned by the individuals we were talking a few minutes ago. But yet, we have a person, Metro, is requesting the zoning. Now, how is that possible?
Well, the council member can request that. He can be the applicant.
On somebody else's property?
Oh, yeah.
But he's not requesting. When I did it?
No, it's done.
Did I do that?
It's fairly straightforward. You probably have.
I don't recall.
You only did it when it was a really good idea, though.
That's, that's why I don't remember it. Okay.
Well, one little thing. Councilman, he's not requesting, the council is not requesting the rezoning of these folks' property, but this triangle, which is owned by somebody who also owns this. So it's being done as part of a redevelopment that includes that, several properties.
The problem was that, I mean, this area is undergoing some redevelopment. It has a fairly vibrant area. What the councilman was finding from the constituents and the property owners in here was that the mixture of zoning districts was making it very difficult to develop because even though most of them were non-residential, they still had different setbacks and there was different criteria. And so what they were trying, what the council was trying to do is to get a uniform zoning over this. It would make it easier for development to occur.
Like I said, no further questions.
Okay.
Jeff? Good. Andre?
We've cleared it. We've cleared all the confusion.
Great.
I did rezone, asked for a big rezoning one time.
How'd that work out for you?
It was the entire district, almost.
All right, we're about to be out of order, I'm pretty sure. Are there any other comments before we seek a motion? All right. Is there a motion regarding this matter?
I'll move we approve staff recommendation, including the housekeeping amendment to the community plan.
Any discussion? All those in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Opposed, vote no. It is approved. Could I ask one thing? The identified water problem that's already existing, Steve, it's really, is there anything that can be done for these folks that are encountering a current problem?
Well, they do own that one parcel that's between this proposal and their residence, and it's vacant. And I think the applicant did try to do like a little ditch, take water around, but sometimes that task, digging a ditch, could become very overwhelming. You know, I think if the applicant or the owner, just to the north, if he just put a curb up, that would stop the water from going onto his adjacent property, but that would just move the water down onto Riverside Drive. So I guess the answer is there's possibilities. Unfortunately, for Metro Stormwater, there's just, there's not really any public areas to where we could actually go do it, and we certainly can't go on private property and improve private property.
Right. Although we've just supported giving more development possibilities to the owner of the private property.
Well, like I said, on the redevelopment of that parcel, I can't see anymore, but it's on the MUNA, just to the west of this property owner. Like I said, I've already flagged it in the computer that whatever comes through that, you know, will be sent to us for a thorough review.
So we can help with that, but it's not going to be, there's not really much you can do regarding the current problem they have, just to the north here.
No. Well, like I said, you know, the right-of-way, the alley as it exists today, it's unimproved. So maybe, you know, if future developments happen and that right-of-way ends up getting approved at a later date, you know, if it was an inverted crown, I think that's the standard alley detail. If it becomes an inverted crown, that would probably help out in the future, but.
Okay. All right.
Is there rain in the alley that needs to be restored or piped?
The alley is unimproved, so there's, so there's, there's just nothing there. It's not even, I don't even remember seeing any gravel out there. It's just.
All right. I just wanted to ask that.
I really wish there was something I could help these guys with.
In the future, if the site's been already redone yet again, then it would cover stormwater jurisdiction, and you wouldn't have control to change this.
Well, it's going to depend on, well, you know, it's really hard to say. It's going to depend on what the application's going to come in as. You know, like I said, it's already an existing building. It's already an existing parking lot. If they came in with a, just say, a 400-square-foot addition, we're not going to be fine for that.
All right. Thank you.
Steve, I'm sorry, I just want to ask one thing. The alley there, it does run in. The alley there, it does run in, I mean, it's unimproved, you say, but it's, runs between their property and the properties on McGavick. Is that, is it continuously?
From what I remember, you, you could barely see the, here, here we go. Let me see. Right over here is where there was a line that said, "Public right-of-way unimproved, not accepted for maintenance," I think in our system. So it's, it's right there. And I'm assuming it comes all the way over through here. And I don't remember if this one right along this line was improved or unimproved. I can only assume that it isn't.
So, so in fact, there is publicly owned land there. I know there's projects and budgets and all those kinds of things, but there is land there that if the property owner to the north isn't able to solve the problem, that maybe they could work with public or with Stormwater to try, I mean, could a curb or some sort of diverter?
Well, like I said, I'm, I'm really hoping that the, the owner of the property upstream, you know, comes forward and says, you know, these guys have been living there for 50 some odd years. If it's just a matter of installing a curb on private property, I'm, I'm hoping he'll step up and be willing to consider it.
Thanks.
Thank you. I believe that brings us down to other business and the report from Historic Zoning Commission. Nothing? Parks?
We report that the item we had about putting a cell tower in Pershing Water Park was deferred.
Okay. Councilman Hunt? All right. I don't believe we had a executive committee report, and we might have an executive director report.
Each of you in our new format should have my written copy of the executive director's report. The one thing I would like to highlight, though, is this Saturday, between 9:00 and 3:30, each hour on the hour, we're going to start the growth mapping process of Nashville next. The process itself takes about 90 minutes, so you don't, and you're not there from 9:00 to 3:30. But if you come on the hour, any of the hours there, you can be part of that process of going through that. What we're doing is, we're looking for the, how this community wants to handle 100,000 new houses and 300,000 new jobs in the next 25 years. And exactly where does that need to go? That's, that's, that's the dilemma. Those of y'all that had an opportunity to hear Dr. Nelson yesterday, got a sense of what the, the character was and what the potential was in terms of, of development and redevelopment. But what we're doing is asking the community, where should they develop, where shouldn't they develop, and how do they want to handle that, that development? I think it's going to be a lot of fun exercise, and I would strongly encourage those of y'all to participate if you can. We have concluded the community priorities component. So far, we've had almost 9,000 people that have participated in the, in the specific this community priorities portion. We had about 5,000 people that participated. The top items, as you recall, there were 34 items that, that kind of came out of the first phase, actually 37. We assumed safe streets, good schools, and efficient government were not items to be ranked. They're just kind of got in by their very nature. And so we asked the community to begin ranking our, what were their top five out of the remaining 34. And the top five were affordable living, transit improvements, growing economy, walkable neighborhoods, and strong neighborhoods. That doesn't mean the others are not going to be dealt with, they'll all be dealt with, but these were what the community priorities were on that. So yesterday, we had, Dr. Nelson came and spoke at Civic Design Center Annual Lunch. We do have that on tape. The, his slide presentation is up right now. His report that he presented to the commission outlining the, really the, the demand for development over the next 25 years is also available on our site for, for downloading. I mean, he specifically looked at, what he did was analyze the population groups, the age groups, the demand groups. He analyzed the, the existing stock of housing and non-residential in this area, and then made his projections in terms of what likely to be the demand. It's particularly interesting, I mean, he not only did Davidson County, he also did the counties around Davidson County and, and made a very interesting, you know, comparison there about how this change is going to be. I think that as you see in analyzing the data, analyzing the trends, you see a greater demand for rental, you see a greater demand for more urban units. And if you look at the last 25 years, the heaviest home build, home buying groups, if you will, the, as, as he broke it out, the group between 35 and 64, you're big, they're the, are the home buying groups that buy the bigger houses because they're in the, that's, that's where portion of their life cycle they're in. They're in this cycle there. The next 25 years, the, the largest group, that, that actually is cut in half, that 34 to 65 age group is cut in half over the next 25 years. It just don't exist. The largest, what they're going to be replaced by basically are the starter homes and the aging boomers, which have a different demand. And so there's a lot of interesting things in terms of, of that. And I think Commissioner Ponder took one thing out of it was that, beginning in 2000 and 2015, there's going to be a tremendous oversupply of large lot suburban housing with people not to buy it. So I think some people are actually putting their houses on the market right now, but that's.
He also mentioned something that made me think the Ponder family is the trend setter, that people are going to be living into their hundreds much more frequently. So after you start us off, we're all going to be following your example.
My brother, not me.
Well, I don't know. You're still with us here, so. Anyway, it's, it's extremely, I think, relevant report, and it will lead to kind of how do we deal with some of the issues. I will mention also that in, before our next meeting, I guess, the ULI Governor's Assistance Panel will be here. They're going to be studying increasing opportunities for infill and redevelopment in Nashville. Their presentation actually is before, it's that lunch, you know, Thursday, I think? Yeah. The 24th, which is the day of our next Planning Commission meeting. And immediately following the lunch, we will be having a workshop to talk about infill issues and then the commission meeting, so. That, that presentation is a culmination of a three-day process where we'll have a number of sort of seasoned veterans in community development, urban infill, from around the country here, looking at urban infill and really looking at it from the perspective of creating a more fiscally sustainable community. Where, where we've learned from Joe Menicosi and Bill Fulton that as we infill more in the areas served by infrastructure and, and in the core, we can become more fiscally sustainable, that we can raise more taxes and it costs us less to service those areas. So it'll be really interesting to hear, and I'd love for you all, all to be there. It's 8:00 in the morning at the Hilton downtown, and I would be happy if anybody's interested to send you a complimentary registration for that event.
I'd like to point out that there, what's also going to help make it multi-dimensional is that it's the culmination of several months of work of people in ULI and working with people throughout the community and the government to talk about the real issues that are on the ground here in Nashville. So they're prepared before they come here with our actual reality, and then they get to bring, you know, their advice, but they've got lots of background information to hear the real, even nuances of sticking points between, you know, different departments or, or not, not points between departments, but I mean, issues that come up for developers when they deal with this department or that. So it gets, we've, they've gotten really critical information before they start advising us, which is going to be, make it more helpful.
Anything else? That's all. We're adjourned.
Man, you did an excellent job.
No, I didn't.